Hello, this is the meeting of the trustees of the Franklin Township Public Library. It is Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. And it's a virtual meeting. And I will call the meeting to order. I'll call call the roll first. First, we'll have a pledge of allegiance to the flag, then I'll call the roll. Flag is in the background there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is banned.
One nation under God. Divisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the roll. NBC.
President.
Kevin McNeil.
President.
Agnes. Sylvan Panya.
Yes.
Iris Kizlin.
Here.
Edward.
Present.
Deanna Gresham.
Not yet.
Mayor Kramer.
Not yet.
Okay, Nicholas, I am here. Also with us is January Adams, our director, and Bob Wardlaw, our technical
support.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notifications for this meeting have been provided to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, and The Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for any members of the public who might be here to say what they wish. Bob, is there any member of the public tuned in?
I believe we have two members of the public. One is only identified by the name of their phone, Galaxy J7, and there was someone named Veronica who seems to have left.
Okay.
Would the person with the Galaxy J7 like to speak?
Oh, this is Veronica. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I think someone else. I got a double booking with other phone.
No, hi, good evening, everyone. This is the Galaxy S7 Prime. I'm Annabelle.
Annabelle.
Hello.
Well, who's going to talk first?
I can, I can go first if you don't mind. This is Veronica. Yeah, we we just, I just wanted to ask about the planned library extension that's currently being discussed in the planning board, and that is situated in 64 Clover Lane, Clover Place, Eden Lane. Yeah, I just wanted to understand the rationale for, for, for this proposed construction.
January, would you like to, shall I say something, or would you like to explain it?
Why don't you start, and I can chime in?
Okay, we now have in Franklin Park, a, a small branch. It's in a strip mall on Route 27 and South Middle Bush Road. It's very well used. But there, it's small, it's 3,800 square feet, it doesn't have an activities room, and it's quite expensive. We have to pay the rent plus taxes. We want to reduce the cost and at the same time, give ourselves the space that we need for the use that it's getting, and it gets very good use. And therefore, we've spent the last, oh, I guess, I guess, the last four or five years looking for a spot. And we have found one, and it's near Franklin Park.
Um, thank, thank you for that. I'm sorry, thank you for that information. I actually am one of the few residents who are attending the board meeting with the planning board, and we are trying to understand why this is being pushed now in a time of pandemic when we don't even know what the future, the future attendance to the library will be. And also, I wanted to ask if the board is aware that the planned location is actually a very alive habitat for wildlife. So, the, and also, the way it was explained to us when we attended the initial planning board meeting is that this is also a small building. And the way that it was explained is that it's possible that we'll eventually expand also. So, the very small lot where this is planned to be situated is actually a very longstanding habitat for, for a lot of wildlife. So, I was actually going to request if, you know, if you have the data supporting the need for this, given that we are in a pandemic and that we don't know what the future is going to hold in terms of how much people would want to go into spaces that are common. And also, I understand that there are studies that will be done. But I would really just like the, the board to consider the impact to the community. Because a lot of the community members here do use that as an ad hoc, as a de facto park where people walk with their babies and their children and their dogs. And again, there's a lot of wildlife in that habitat.
Okay, I, I think I have a partial answer to that. Our mayor, who is now here at this meeting, was insistent that everything we do in design be cognizant of you, you, the neighbors. And our engineer has taken that to heart and has designed an area with a buffer, with a, with a large buffer, close to the, so it isn't too close to the houses. And we haven't seen final drawings, but I think what we've seen of sketches and ideas, it's going to be a very nice area. We needed, we figured we needed about an acre to do this job, to build a 5,000-square-foot building with adequate parking. Instead, we bought two acres from the Board, or we're going to buy two acres from the Board of Education, just to give us the options of locating the building and the parking in such a way that there are large buffer zones, and also, there will be a number of new trees planted. And the the environmental impact should be very small, and most of the trees are in the portion of this four-acre lot that we did not buy. And that's where some deer have been noticed by the engineers who've gone in to look. So, yeah, we have taken your concerns very much to heart, and especially the mayor has.
Right, but, okay, I'm just confused, right? Because right now, I'm, I'm a data scientist, okay, and I'm an IT. Right now, I look at a public library website, and it's all grab and go. Right? So, I, rationale was that there's not enough space in the old building, right? So, how, what data supports need for another building when we don't even know what the future is going to look like in terms of people wanting to go back to spaces like this? And I've seen the designs. It eats up a lot of the, the land and the trees, so it doesn't really quite make up for the lost habitat. Because it is half the land that's already being used as habitat. And also, the concern that I have is, go ahead, please.
And to add to that, when you say that most of the trees are in the half that will not be, that will not be built upon, I don't think that's quite right, because that, the, all that part of land is really trees. There's no space there that's without trees. So, if they're going to build that library on that area, there's going to be a lot of habitat that will be impacted, really. But yeah, to, to second Veronica's point, really, that's our concern. It's like, no, it's a new world. Right? It's a new world. It's post-pandemic. And I think most of, I'm not sure if you've had studies done on what are the clients of the library really? How is it skewed right now? Are we skewing on the younger generation, the older generation? Do we have the demographics data? And what is the projected use for this different demographic, demographics? So, because I know the, the reason for, for building the the building is because we might have some money, right? That, that we have budget for it, and we're going to take advantage, given that. But if we say that the demographic is skewing younger, they might probably be more geared to online use rather than the building itself. So, have we done those studies? And maybe, rather than beef up infrastructure, beef up your digital offerings?
I'd like to ask January to comment on the
I'd like to answer that.
the, the, the room, the activity room that, that really does lead to use by younger people.
Yeah, um, we have a, a large clientele, children and their parents who like to come in for storytimes. And we've also found during the pandemic, the demand is still there to use the library. People are still coming here to use the library. And these at the branches, all, across all ages. We have children, story hours, and we have the older adults. And even though digital is becoming more prominent, people still want books. They still want a place to go where they can talk, where they can see a program, where they can have a meeting.
Okay, so do you have hard data on that, that we've done post-pandemic?
Post-pandemic? No.
Is it possible to maybe have that study?
If it was still in the pandemic?
That's actually a very important
No, I mean, now in this new world, right? We, this is probably, the, the, I, I just want, I guess, like, if, if we could have that so that hopefully, the resources that we have, that your resources, the library can be better fit, what, 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 what is it that your clientele, clientele really needs, right? I'm, I don't know if, I'm sorry, I just see you as Jay Adams. I, I didn't quite catch your first name.
January.
January.
January is in the month?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. Yeah, so I, I would just really like to know if there's studies, like, if you could survey your clientele and say, hey, you know, what do you think are the need, and if we could have those hard, hard data? Because then we could understand why. And also, the other reason that we heard was that the south branch was being thought of because we want to service clientele that may be far from the main branch, right? So, I think that's why the, the, the branch on Route 27 and Sand Hills is that, was really quite working. And was of use to people before COVID, because I guess it could serve people from the south. Is that correct? That was also part of the rationale?
I'm not quite sure I followed that. Like Nick said, the reason we want to move over to where Franklin Park School is because the facility on Route 27 is very expensive to maintain, and it's too small, it doesn't have an activities room, so when we do a storytime, it interrupts and disrupts the other people who are trying to use the library for other reasons. That's the main reason that we want to do this. We have looked at other properties on 27, and none of them worked out.
What, what properties have we looked at?
Okay, I think that, I think that we're getting, I think we've answered some questions here now. We have looked at a number of properties. Let me just, let me just say that. And
Where, if we want to, if we want to know that, can we maybe reach out to some of you to get more details? Because we're also working, the, there's also one part of the reason of why the, the opinion is like, this is a very small, very residential kind of place, right? So, if you're, and it's already school there, if you put a library there, you're going to invite more traffic in into this very small street as it is.
Okay, well, as far as actual data, we have hired a traffic engineer. And there will be a report from that traffic engineer by the time we get to the, to appear before the planning board. And that will have hard data. That will have data that's, that's produced under recognized standards for traffic prediction and control. And this particular man has done a lot of work in Franklin Township in the past, so he knows he's a professional, and there will be that data. So, I think at this point, we'd like to leave it sort of at that, and there will be a second second part of the meeting where the public can speak if there are anything that you want to say later on in the meeting that will be honored. As far as asking us to predict what's going to happen in the future, I don't think many of us are really able to do that.
No, 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 of course not. We're, we're not fortune tellers. So, it's just like, for me, it's like getting hard data, surveying your current clientele, I think, would be doable in terms of like, what kind of what kind of offerings and services are they looking for from a library right now, going after, you know, we get released from all this quarantine, hopefully. So, yeah.
January and our librarian in the southern branch do have quite a few statistics which can be considered hard data because they're kept kind of carefully. And
But that's pre-pandemic, right? That data?
So, now, recent.
Is that available to the public then?
January?
Did you mean that a south branch library is open even now?
Yes.
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 Definitely.
People are going in?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so we, we'd like to see that, if, if that's available.
You can go there.
Go where? Like to see the data.
The library.
You can go there and then ask for the data from the persons over there?
They wouldn't have it. I, I'm not quite sure what data you're looking for.
Excuse me. This is, might I suggest, January, you have the statistics monthly on the use of, of the library with how many people go, how many books were taken out, that kind of thing. Why don't you provide her with two years past for the branch, southern branch?
Have you considered the proper
This is running a little bit longer than, you know.
Apologies.
Your question.
We would like to keep this open because this impacts our lives very detrimentally. And we would like to have a dialogue with the Board of Trustees, as, along with all the other members of the Board of Planning, right? Because this really does impact our lives very, very detrimentally.
Okay, the way that, the way that public hearings are usually held is each person gets a, a reasonable amount of time to speak. So, this time, I'd like to ask, are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Now that a couple have had their, their turn, are there any other members who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to say that we will get you as much hard data as we possibly can on the use of the southern branch, both prior to the pandemic and during the pandemic. And if you could
Do we have the names and addresses of the people who spoke?
No, we don't. We should. Okay.
The names and addresses, and I do suggest that January send them the sheets that you provide us every month on the southern branch, the activities of the southern branch for the last two years. If I may say something, we're, we're not going to be able to tell you what the effect of the pandemic will be on the future. However, movie theaters are opening up. Restaurants are opening up. I do not expect that we're going to be in isolation forever from now on. In a very popular library branch that was running too expensive, and we are now going to do something that eventually we won't have to pay for other than maintenance because we will own it, and we'll save money, and it'll be more useful library branch. As far as the use of habitat, I, I understand progress sometimes takes habitat. The township over the last five years has preserved, I believe, over 700 acres of habitat.
But not even
With our open space fund, so.
Uh, one last thing. Sorry.
The mayor still has the floor.
Sorry.
And, and so, I think we've done quite a bit as far as as far as preserving habitat. We will continue to preserve habitat. Over a third of the township is preserved open space, but not every acre can be spared. You know, there are some times when we need to make some progress and move forward, and that's what we're doing, to save money, to provide a better installation. And that saving of money will provide more resources for the library, for the people.
One last thing, then.
At this point, I'm sorry, at this point, I would like to close this portion of the public meeting. There will be a second portion of the public meeting. And and move on with the, the next item on the agenda. Meanwhile, I would ask that you both give your names and addresses, send them to January Adams at the, the library. And she will, I'm sure, get some hard data for you to look over. I think that's fair. I think that's as fair as we can be right now. And I appreciate her letting us know your feelings and assure, assure you that the mayor has made it clear that these feelings should be taken into account.
Okay, thank you for having us, but I'll wait. I have one more point that I'd like to make, but I'll wait if there's some more time.
Moving on. The, is there a motion to accept the minutes of our prior meeting?
Oh.
NBC?
Yes.
I second.
And Iris has seconded. Any discussion about the minutes of the, of the March meeting?
Oh.
Seeing none. Oh, yeah, Agnes?
Is it about the executive one that we had?
No, no.
No, no.
No. The, the regular meeting minutes, but we're in your packet.
No.
Okay.
Right.
Those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? These minutes are accepted unanimously. I'd like to move on to the directors' reports. January, would you like to start with the financials?
Anybody has any questions or concerns, just let me know. Everything is running as it should be financially? There's no surprises?
No.
And how about the, your operations report?
Okay. I'd like to start that by pointing out, as I think I probably do all the time, that many libraries in the area are only offering curbside pickup. So, we do get comments and compliments from people that we are letting people in, because it's important to people that they like to browse. During March, we had 25 adult programs with 635 attendees. One of your programs were posted on the kids blog in addition to two new make and take programs. No, it's take and make. The Bunny Bonanza Outreach on March 26th, that was a very windy day. I don't know if you remember that. But despite that, it was successful. We had staff members handing out prize bags. We had a statue of Peter Rabbit, and then we had staff members over here on the side parking lot for those people who wanted to pull over. They could hear stories. And that went very well, despite it being very windy. And I've made arrangements. I had a knowledgeably volunteer go to visit Aruna Metler. She went on Monday. So, we started the process of looking over Bob's, Bob Metler's collection and ascertaining what the library is going to add to its collection. And I think that was it. Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, I have a, moving on, I have a short president's report. I'd like to report that January and I have been meeting with the officials who are responsible for guiding us through the process of getting approvals for our construction plan. We met in early, in mid-April, came up with a schedule that was just a little bit too long. It would have, it would have delayed any construction until the earliest, early next year. We then had another meeting about a week ago, no, actually, a few days ago, and came up with, we moved the schedule. And it shows that we will have site plan documents prepared through May and June. We'll have town review of those plans in July. We'll plan to go before the planning board with those plans on August 4th. That's then construction documents, if, once the planning board approves. And that'll be both the site plan and the subdivision. Then it'll be a couple of months for the construction documents to be prepared. And hopefully, that can happen by the end of July. Then this board, its trustees, will approve and authorize the bid process. And the advertising for bids can be ready by September 1st. It'll take five weeks or so for the contractors to look over the bid, bids, documents and bid. We would like to award by October 27th, and then get permits and perhaps start at the end of this year before the weather gets cold. That's it for the president's report.
Good.
And correspondence and communications you've gotten in your packet article that January was kind enough to send us? Are there any, is there any other correspondence? Or communication?
I'd just like to add a little bit about the article, the misinformation that as you can see, that libraries are doing various things, and we're doing, we've done a panel already. We did one in February. That was questions about the vaccine, and then we're doing another one, I think it's next week, on vaccinated now what? And so, that'll have the mayor there and a representative from Rutgers. So, that's one of the things that this library is doing to handle misinformation.
That's wonderful.
Good job, January.
That's right. Very nice. Article was very interesting.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I would like to mention a correspondence I got that I eventually forwarded to January. It was a gentleman who, because of COVID, was separated from his mother, who had a number of library books. And they were fined a great deal because of the time it took to get them in, but they had no way of getting to, or to get to the library books to bring them in. And January stepped in and did the right thing and the responsible thing, and forgave the fine. Good.
Any libraries are doing similar things. That's very nice, January.
Yep.
Yep.
We will always, we will always work with people, always.
Is there any old business? There any new business, January?
Yes, okay. This is a, this is gonna be a big deal. This is um Brian O'Shea from the Somerset County Library System would like to uh go to his board and uh present the idea of having reciprocal borrowing between us and the Somerset County Library System. What I am asking for you tonight is just that you would agree that we can investigate this. You're not agreeing to start it or anything. It would be a pilot program. Um, our borrowers could borrow from the county, county uh part holders could borrow from us. And like I said, this is a really big deal. Many people have asked about this. And um as some of you may know, past history between us and the county library hasn't always been amicable. But um this is a big stride forward and uh I'm very excited about it and I hope you are too.
Good.
Hey, yes, definitely. That includes digital collections as well, right?
For me?
Did that, that includes digital media as well?
Right now, I think it just includes physical, but we're, we're working this all out.
Nice. Okay.
I agree. This is a, a very, very big, very big deal.
Step in the right direction.
Yeah, we do have reciprocity with others through uh the Raritan Valley uh group, but uh this is, the, the Somerset County Library System has many resources.
Right. Very nice.
Is there, would, would someone like to state a resolution that says, yes, we are interested in investigating this and moving forward with it? Yes, Iris?
I would like to make a motion that Franklin Township Library um goes forward with the investigation of um us joining the Somerset County Library Association.
Not joining it, which is kind of borrowing.
Typical borrowing.
Typical borrowing.
I would vote second.
Okay, who seconded?
Good job, Ed.
Ed, okay. Any further dis, further discussion? I think I'd like to uh just say that uh when January mentioned this to me a few days ago, she said that uh there would be a uh score kept. Like if we borrowed five hundred books from the library system and library system people borrowed three hundred books from us, there'd be a two hundred book differential that we would presumably pay some fee to the Somerset County System for.
I don't, we haven't worked any of that out yet.
No, but basically it would be counting and keeping score for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I have spoken to Brian O'Shea on a few occasions and he's been very cooperative with any information that uh we needed, so. Yes, we do have good relationships with, with the county at this point. Okay, is there any other new business?
Do you have to take a vote?
Sorry.
On your motion? I guess so, yeah.
Of course. Okay, those in favor of the motion as seconded?
Hi.
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 I see that uh this has passed unanimously. Thank you for queuing me in on that, getting ahead. Okay. I would like to suggest that someone make a motion to uh release the minutes of the executive session that was held on uh March twenty-fourth. This, as you recall, was an executive session to uh talk about uh personnel, about compensation for our director. And uh the open public meeting laws um provide that we should make minutes of uh executive sessions available as soon as there are no longer um any reason to keep them uh secret. So is there a motion?
I sound move.
Okay.
Agnes seconds?
Agnes second.
Um, before we move, may I make a little correction?
Yes.
Um, spelling of my it's just the spelling of my name. Is there where there's, there's an A, it should be a U? That's it. That's, that's all I wanted to.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, thank you very much for correcting that for me.
So then I'll second that, second the motion.
The motion is seconded. Is there any other discussion of this motion? Taking a vote, those in favor? Please signify by raising their hand or saying aye.
All right.
I see that this motion has passed unanimously. Is there any other new business by any member, any trustee? Meeting, moving on, I'd like to open the second portion of the, the second public portion of the meeting and um allow for short public comment um by members of the public.
Just before you, before you do that, Mr. President, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, of course.
Oh, at council meetings, library meetings, every meeting I've been to, you state a time that the person has to speak. The person can come up once, they state their name and address, and only one person is up at a time. Um that keeps the meeting much more orderly.
Very good suggestion and I uh would set the time at uh three minutes per person. And uh, yes, stating the name and address at the, at the beginning is uh is, is in order. Okay, who would like to go first?
Are they able to unmute?
They're on mute.
Hi, good evening. Yes, this is Annabelle. I'm from Sixty Clover Place. And I'm sorry if we hijacked that first part of your meeting. I didn't really know. I was actually expecting you to say, okay, all public, you know, uh opinions will be after your uh formal agenda, but then since you opened it, I thought that you had a different set of structure.
That's okay. Can you split, state your last name too, please?
It's Annabelle Alvarez and I'm from Sixty Clover Place. I'm like two houses away from the proposed library. And the other question that I wanted to ask is I know I've heard that you've explored other areas where this can be put, right? I do understand that there are still some people that a, a library is a good thing. I, I like libraries, right? Um, but it's just that if we're thinking of putting it where at sixty-four, I just feel that's not the best optimal place that a library who, who, which is, we expect it to be uh of much use to to the township should be situated. How have we explored other places or other areas that the township already owns right now where this library might be better suited? Meaning it's in probably off twenty-seven where it's easier access for everyone more south to to service um your clients from, from the south park of of the township, which I heard in one of the presentations was part of the reason why this branch was, was being um, you know, uh thought of. So I would like to hear that. And if not, I was looking at the public records, there seems, there seemed to be an area like two acres or one acre that is publicly owned near the old, old, old. I don't know what street, what street is that? It's like the Crescent, that is the old street. And I, I see like two, three lots there that's owned by the Franklin Township that's currently, I think, vacant. Have we looked at that? That's off twenty-seven.
But what street is that?
Um, you know where there's an old, I don't, I forgot the name.
Is it down in the Kingston area? Because we did consider that and it's much too far away from the uh center. However, it's not our real purpose here to um have a new, new dialogue, but rather to hear what you are asking. And then I will try to answer some of these questions, for instance, the, which places we've looked at. So you have about another minute left.
We've looked at it for many years.
Right, so th, those are really just my questions. What, what areas have we looked at that will, that are in places that I think would make, uh, would be more, I would say, you know, it's already a well-traveled road. Um, it's not a residential road. It's accessible to most of the, your clients from the township.
Okay, thank you. We will, uh, I will get you some information on the properties we've looked at. And your time is uh up now, so thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
Um, yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Veronica Avenir. Also from Clover Place. Uh, my question is, what are the criteria by which you decided that sixty-four Clover Place is the right place, is the right location?
Okay.
That's, that's, that's my basic question.
Okay.
And also the other question is, if we were to find something with exactly or similar, very close, quite um you know, characteristics as the criteria that you have used to determine that this location is what you want, are you open to reconsidering? I, I, I would like to have an honest conversation with the board because if you are not even open to considering, then there really is no point in asking all the questions. I'm trying to work off data here um so that it's all logical and not emotional. So I would like to come up with a win-win situation whereby the library can achieve what it wants and the community will keep what it has. So if you could, please let me know. Um, again, an honest conversation. I understand your agenda. I just want you to understand our agenda. It's a peaceful life here. Introducing the library here is going to disrupt our lives very, very badly. I know you said that you listen, so I am putting that to the test. Are you willing to reconsider if we find you a place that is close enough?
I can't say that we're willing to start all over again. We've started over again a couple of times. We have quite a bit of uh uh investment here, but I will, I will, I will honestly try to answer that for you. And I will uh, I will, I will contact you and with some answers.
I, 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 I have your answer already, so uh it's too bad that that is the answer, but if you could please provide me that data, I will do my best to actually find another location that is a win-win one for all of us. If that is acceptable to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak at this point? Get their three minutes in?
There are none.
There are none, okay. Um I'd like to declare that the uh public portion of the uh, the second public portion of this meeting is closed. And uh we have no need for an executive session at this time. And I'd like to uh confirm that our next meeting date will be May twenty-sixth of this year. And uh from all I can see, it'll probably be a virtual meeting as well.
Probably.
I'd like now to uh, if there's no other comments by the trustees, I'd like to uh uh solicit a uh sub, a motion for adjournment?
I'm voting to adjourn this meeting.
Yeah.
Kevin, and NBC seconds?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
Hi.
I, I would say that that, again, has passed unanimously. And I uh thank you all for your attention tonight.